Okay. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the January seventeenth City Council meeting. Hard to believe it's the seventeenth already, but welcome to 2023. First off, we're going to start off by doing our roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Mosio.
Here.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Here.
Alderman Newsom.
Present.
Alderman Turner.
Present.
Alderman Rivera.
Present.
Alderman Florian.
Present.
Alderman Hayes.
Present.
Alderman Bolton.
Present.
Alderman Seager.
Right.
Mayor Taylor.
Present.
Eva McCormick, ma'am.
Thank you very much. Tonight, we're going to have our invocation by Pastor Camples from the La Luz de Mundo Church on 100 South Chapel Street here in Waukegan. Thank you so much, Pastor, for being here this evening.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor and City Council. It is a pleasure and an honor to be here this evening. Let us pray. Eternal God, you are God from everlasting to everlasting. You are our Creator. You are our Father. You are the beginning and you are the end. This evening, we humbly ask for your guidance and that your grace be seen throughout the city of progress. May our communities shine with the light of hope and may they be seen as a source of prosperity, wisdom, and health. We ask for your blessings for Mayor Ann Taylor, the city's administration and council members. It is our prayer that you give them the wisdom of Solomon, the courage of David, the compassion of Jesus, so they may lead the city with humility and vision. We pray for the city's first responder. We ask you to protect them and sustain them jointly with their families during their tenure in which they serve. We give thanks to you for their sacrifice as they have chosen to share their loved ones with us. We thank you that we live in a country where we can have free and fair elections. We pray that all elected and appointed officers of this great city will be guided to serve justly and to walk humbly before the people who entrusted them. We pray that each and every Waukeganite realizes that they are our brothers and sisters keeper and that out of one blood, you created all people to dwell on the face of the earth. Give them, we pray, the mind of the good Samaritan, so they may not pass people up, but instead uplift them. Finally, we ask, bless the city of Waukegan. Bless the great state of Illinois and bless these United States of America. We pray this prayer in the marvelous and magnificent name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor Camples. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the City Council meeting. I will start off by saying that we still are having microphone problems, so I'm asking all of the aldermen, please talk into your mic this evening. We will be getting them fixed in February, but in the meantime, please bear with us. We've had some repairs since the last City Council meeting, so they are better. But you will also probably see Alderman Seager and Alderman Mosio sharing a microphone. I want to start off this evening by quickly talking about a topic that seems to have taken off during social media. What I want to set the record straight of what happened last week. Many of you have become aware that we did have the Illinois State Police and the Lake County State's Attorney's Office here with a search warrant that was at the Waukegan City Clerk's office last week. I urge all city people, all city staff to cooperate. No one has not cooperated. They did not walk off with boxes of documents that was stated in the, some of the social media. They just wanted documents, that's it. And whatever they requested, they were given. There were no boxes. I don't think there was a whole lot of information that was retrieved, but that is their right to come in with a search warrant, and we cooperated, everybody cooperated with them, and that's the end of the story. I want to move on to some good things. Two Waukegan seniors have been awarded the Evan Scholarship, a scholarship that provides full housing and tuition to golf caddies and can be valued at over $125,000 for four years. So if you're looking at ways to finance your child's college, golf caddies. Congratulations to, I'm going to probably say her name wrong, it's Aleah Mendoza, who attends Crystal DeRae St. Martin, and Natalie Vila, who attends Woodlands Academy. Congratulations to the Waukegan High School bowling team for finishing in the top five at the North Suburban Conference Tournament. Congratulations to William Cornier on placing fourth at the competition, and Jacob Adams, who finished fifth, and also took home the Sportsman Award. The African American Museum at the England Manor is offering a weekday tour this Thursday, January nineteenth. The museum's focus is on the African American experience and on educations, on education. Tickets are available at eventbrite.com. Also, on Thursday evening, the Waukegan Chamber of Commerce is hosting Business After Hours at the Lake County Tech Hub at 13 North Genesee Street. This is an opportunity to get to know other business partners and local politicians and from the surrounding area. Registration is available through the chamber. Finally, our nationally ranked Waukegan High School JROTC Drill Team will hold their benefit dinner on Saturday, January 21st, from 11:00 to 5:00 at Brookside Campus. The team will give performances which should not be missed at 1:00, 3:00, and 4:00 p.m. Lastly, I want to announce, it's probably a little difficult for me, on Friday, January 6th, Waukegan Police Chief Zupek informed me that he'd chosen to retire, effective at the end of this month, January 31st. Chief Zupek is a proud Waukeganite and a proud Bulldog who has served this community for over 26 years. I know our police officers and staff here at City Hall will miss him and his leadership. I will miss him immensely. I have the greatest respect for him. I have loved every minute of working with him, and I want to wish him and his family sincerely the best as he, you know, goes off on new endeavors. Chief Zupek, would you like to come up right now? We saw you hiding back there.
First, I would like to thank the Junior Bulldogs and the Boxing Club for coming out for my retirement. I appreciate you folks coming out for me, so. Council members and citizens of Waukegan, as the mayor said, as you're aware, January 6th, I informed the mayor of my intent to retire on the 31st of this month. Let me quell rumors, squash rumors. I've taken a lot of phone calls. There's been a lot of concern from many members that have reached out to me and others in the community. I am not being forced to resign. I am not under some investigation. I am plain and simply retiring. I have been a law enforcement officer for 28 years, 26 with Waukegan, the last year with Waukegan as the chief of police. I know my friends in the media only credited me with seven months, but in three days, it'll actually be a year, so. I have had a healthy and very rewarding career. So it is, it is my choice and by my choice only in that it is a choice that I made with my family, and that is ultimately the decision that my wife and my children and I came to. I've been a lucky man. I became a police officer in the city of Waukegan, and as the mayor said, in the town that I grew up in. I am a Bulldog, Waukegan High, Waukegan East High graduate, a Bulldog, as many know. Just a lucky guy who, who just wanted to be a police officer and was fortunate enough to rise to the position of chief of police. And as I told many of you a year ago, I had zero aspirations of ever being the chief of police. I never thought that that was something that would happen in my career, but it's just where my career took me. I, I've served in many different positions, from patrol officer to detective. I've been fortunate that I've held every rank that this department has to offer. Slow progression up, and that's the way it usually should, should go. It's not an easy job being the chief of police, I will say that. It's been, it's been, it's been a tough go some of the time. But I do want people to understand, and I said this a year ago, that the hardest job that we have in law enforcement is the men and women that are out on the streets answering those 911 calls every day. That's the hardest job. This is a tough job, but that's the hardest job. And those are the men and women that we have to continue to support out there when they're out there every day. I've witnessed some amazing police work in my career, things that go unnoticed and that most of the public never hears about. I also know that the community on many times has, has called out and tried to hold the police department accountable for tragic incidents that have occurred, and as well they should. We have to be held accountable to the, for the things that we do. But those are by far not the standard or the norm that goes on inside of this police department. I want to thank all my fellow coworkers, the men, the men and women that are here in blue, those that are out on the streets working, and the retirees that have been gone before me. It's those individuals that have allowed me to excel and quite honestly, made me look good throughout the different positions that I've held. You don't do it on your own. It's the people below you which make you successful, and I've been very fortunate to work with some outstanding men and women, and I want to thank them for that. I thank my family, particularly my wife Stacy and my two sons Ryan and Kyle. Their unwavering support throughout my career. I know that we talk about sacrifice as law enforcement officers, but our families do feel that sacrifice. There have been many holidays and many birthdays where I wasn't around when I was in the lower ranks, when I was a detective and called in in the middle of the night. So without their support, I would have never made it this far, and to them, I am internally grateful. Lastly, about me, it's, it's been my honor and my privilege to serve these great citizens of Waukegan. It's, it's been my only hometown. It's been my hometown my entire life. I'm not going anywhere. I will be around, as I've informed many who've spoken to me over the last few days. I ask that the council and the great citizens of this community continue to support the men and women in blue who risk a lot for this community every day, and they do it because they want to do it and they truly enjoy serving the citizens of this community, so. It is, I'm in my last 14 days on the job, and I, I know that I have to keep to a script here, but since I'm in my last week here, I can talk about something else here. But Mayor, I'm not trying to, to get ahead of you because I know that you're, I believe I'm going to make another comment about who my replacement is going to be, but I'm going to beat you to the pun if you don't mind, because it's someone I, I'm excited about for this organization. As the mayor will inform you, it's not my call. I don't appoint the next chief, but Deputy Chief Edgar Navarro, I believe, will be appointed interim chief on February, February 1st. And I, and I say this because I truly am excited for Deputy Chief Navarro. He is, he's been with this department for 25 years. He's worked as a patrol officer, detective, a gang and narcotics detective. He's been a sergeant. He's been a commander. He's been a deputy chief. He's followed the, a lot of his career path mirrors the career path that I had, because we started at about the exact same time. Edgar and I have worked together for many, many years when we were, before we were supervisors, and then once we became supervisors, our careers were intertwined quite often. I was fortunate to be his supervisor for a lot of it, which I know sometimes he's not fortunate that I was his supervisor, but the, I tell you, you will not find a man with higher integrity inside of our organization. He is an incredible leader. I told the mayor, and I assure the city council and the citizens, you are in good hands with Deputy Chief Edgar Navarro taking the helm. He will continue the progress that is made, and his vision going forward, I'm quite certain will be what the, what the citizens of this, this great city want. Lastly, I thank everyone for their time. I congratulate Deputy Chief Edgar Navarro on his soon-to-be appointment to interim chief, and I wish him the best. I know he will do well, and thank you to everyone here for my time. Thank you.
As I stated earlier, I will drastically miss him, but I do know that you can find him probably on the golf course this summer. I'm pretty sure he'll be nice and tan and enjoying life while we're at council, but again, thank you so much, Chief Zupek, for your service, and I just wish you nothing but the best. At this point, I'm going to have current Deputy Chief Navarro come up here. I'm not going to have you speak at this council, that'll be at the next one. I just want people to know who he is. If you haven't seen him, I'm sure most of the community knows him. He's been active in the community for many years, but we're going to have him talk at the next City Council meeting, but I just want to say congratulations and honestly, we're in good hands, so thank you. And that concludes my mayor's comments. Madam Clerk?
Next, we have a number of awards, ma'am. We're going to have the Waukegan Proud Award, and I believe there is someone here you want to introduce.
Yes. The first person I want to do, introduce is Hugo Villalobos. Is he here? Come on, don't be shy. I promise I won't bite, but first off, let me grab the mic. Okay, testing. Come on, Hugo. Come on, we want, we want pictures of this special young man. This is the Waukegan Proud Award in recognition for a National Scholastics Goosebumps Contest for working towards your ambitions to be a Stan Lee, a cartoonist, and illustrator. Is that not amazing at this age that he knows that? So you're a special young man. Did you want to say anything or no? Okay, that's fine. I like that. Man, a few words, right? But this is in recognition for his achievements, and please give him a round of applause because this is pretty special to know at this age this is what you want to do. There you go. Hold it. There you go. Can I have his teacher come up too? Come on. I don't, come on. Yep. You're being pulled up here because I know how much work you put in, and thank you so much for working with the students you do. I know what an incredible teacher you are, so thank you for being here and supporting this young man.
This is your proud moment.
Teacher, get in there.
Yes.
Get in there. Get in there, teacher. Yeah.
Okay, Mayor, next, you have a number of awards for the Waukegan Junior Bulldogs team.
Yes.
This is going to keep you busy.
This one's going to keep me busy. Okay, I'm going to have everybody come up from the Junior Bulldogs. First off, I'd like to have their coaches come up. Now, there's a trophy. Where's all my coaches? Okay. Are there more than that?
There's two more, but it's just.
Okay. So what I'm going to have you do first off is rather than calling all the names, I'm going to give you all the awards, but I want you to talk about the program and how amazing these kids are, so.
Okay, how y'all doing this evening? I'm Coach Leo, the head coach. I had 30 children, 33 children this year, and it was, it was an interesting experience, the road we went on, but we, we got it done. A lot of different personalities, but they stayed strong, paid attention, worked hard, persevered, and we finally was able to get one this year. Three A championships, man. I'm proud of these boys. I'll do it again. Yeah, we, and also, I want to thank Des, our president, our A.D., for having us a successful season this year. Our board members, our team mom, she did a wonderful job with all those kids and communicating with the parents, week in and week out for a long, long, this was a long season, man. Hey, I'd love to have 33 again, but we're going to have to chop it down next year, but congratulations, boys, young Bulldogs, the organization, and we are going to try to do it again next year.
Again, not all of them, yeah. Again, I just want to say what an amazing program, and thank you for volunteering your time and doing this. What a trophy to have, right? Are there any parents that want to come up for the pictures? I just want to say we had a grandfather out here to support too. You know, this is what makes our community great is when we have the whole family involved, so thank you, sir, for being here. I just want, I just found out, I did not know that, that this was his first year as head coach. That's pretty amazing. You know, you're setting the expectations pretty high.
Mayor, real quick, I'd like to, as a former football coach at the high school, I had great job, coach. That's good to see. I'm retiring in May, so reach out. This young lady right here, you know, I got a shout out to my girl, Desiree Martinez. She is the nuts and bolts behind this, I think the coach will admit that. She does this out of the kindness of, she doesn't have any kids anymore, they're all grown, they're gone. She does this, all right, to keep it going because she loves kids. She's one of my former students, one of my favorites. She knows that, she knows I love her, but she, she's the lady behind, like they say, you know, there's always a woman behind the scenes that makes everything work, and she is the lady behind the scenes making things work.
Next, I'd like to have Angel's Boxing come up. So I'm going to have Angel talk a little bit about the boxing club, but first off, I want to tell you a little bit, when I first met this organization, I met a very talented young lady on the team, and she's here tonight. Yeah. I'm going to give these to your coach for you to hand out. This young lady impressed me so much. One of the things she told me was about, she took up boxing because she was bullied. She made such an impact on me, and let me see what this club was about, that I wanted the community to know what this club was about and to meet them and to see what's behind these kids. They also have chess, great way for kids to learn. Again, Angel does a phenomenal job with them and the other coaches, so this is for you to meet them and recognize the work that they do. They also have some pretty fancy hardware I want you to see too. I'm going to step out the way so you can see this.
Thank you, everybody. I don't know where to start. I feel like it's a dream, and I'm really excited to share with the community. Angel's boxing started, I think it started as a parent concern about what it's, you know, what his son was going through, bullying, and I, I decided to take actions, and here we are. In a few months, we're going to be five years. I have met a lot of great people that are supporting my, my organization. Once they know about my goals and what I want to reach, I get a lot of good things from them, and that gives me more fuel for me to keep going and going, and, and I think that this is a really good example of what a parent can do for, for their community. And with that, I have met a lot of great people, like I said, great coaches. I have Coach Ernie, the Hall of Fame, he's a National Hall of Fame. Coach Ernie, Ernie Brown. He's a legend of Lake County. You know, we need to have that recognition because he's been working so much in the community. He's been helping a lot, and you know, those are the things that, you know, we need to get that recognition for them. We have Coach John, Coach John LeBlanc. Coach John, he, he has brought a lot of, a lot of good things on the gym. Because of him, we are able to create, the program is able to be able to expand it where we now, we have beginners, intermediate, and then we have advanced. intermediate, and then we have advanced. The good thing about it is that it keeps our fighters keeping busy, you know, not just punching the bag. We give them training, an actual training that, I would say, training that if we take it somewhere else, people pay top money for that, and we don't do that here. We bring it for the community here. Also, we have Coach Ezekiel, Coach Siggi. Coach Siggi, he's also, since I started boxing, I know him for a long time, too. He's also helping me with the kids. Each of the coaches, they have a class they run. And I'm really proud of that, you know, their support. We also have a chess program, our chess program is called Chess for Fighters. And the reason why we started chess, it was because we were getting ready for the Golden Gloves last year, and our fighters, they were a little bit of nervous. And I talked to Hector, and I said, you know what, I think that we should bring a little bit of, something where the kids can, you know, can train, but also give them that half an hour for them to kind of stay busy with their mind. You know, we're working, you know, we exercise in body, but we also, we want to make sure we work their mind, too. So, I reached out to Coach Hector, I told him the idea, and here we are. Their support, it's been, this is what we are, you know, it's an organization that has been growing, and the place is always open for anybody who's willing to continue for that vision that we want, help the community. We have chess program, we have ABA Media, we have a group of kids who interview. We have a leadership program where they get to interview community leaders, you know, whoever wants to also be interviewed by them. They're doing a really great job. We just did a poem by Trey Baker, our kids did really good, so just go to our page, Angel's Boxing Academy, and it was a really great video. The kids did really good, we get a lot of feedback. The video was sent to the daughter of Martin Luther King. It was sent to her. We have not any reply, but guess what, it was tagged in there, and we know that when she gets to see it, our kids are gonna be really proud of that. We know what we have done in the past, it's just something that we just want to continue and grow as more as we can. Understand that everybody who helps me here right now, they're not getting paid for it. They're giving their time for us, for the kids. Also, the parents, the parents, you're more than welcome to stop by, but just to know that when you walk in there, anything you see, any punching bag you see there, any anything hanging in there on the wall, is because everybody we put together and, you know, we bought everything together. Like, all the punching bags is because of the parents. Every chessboard that we have is because of the parents. So, it's a collective effort that we all put in, and that's all I can say. I want to thank my wife, my kids, Camille, Elliot, for giving me the support that I, you know, for giving me the chance to give the time that I do for my community, because this is something that I love to do, and they understand that. Sacrifices, they know that. My three-year-old, he understands. He knows that every Tuesday, he comes to the gym, and at three years old, he's already training with the kids. I want this to be an example of, I want this to be an example to know that our kids who are part of our academy, they know that if I did it, they can do it, too. And I can't wait to see them grow and do great things for our community, and it's for Waukegan and Lake County. So, thank you, and thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Again, this man works all day and then comes home and volunteers his time. So, I just wanted you to know about this group. They're a phenomenal group. We'll do, counsel, can we do pictures? And then we'll have the parents come up, too. And then are there any parents that want to be part of the picture? Come on up. Come on in. Hi there. How are you? Thank you, everyone.
Okay, so Mayor, that concludes the presentation portion. Parents, we're gonna continue with the meeting. You are welcome to stay and listen to all of it, or you are welcome to leave. It's certainly up to you.
We'll give everybody a couple minutes if they'd like to leave and take kids home, we understand that. Why that's happening, we're going to have our legal counsel read the rules of decorum.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Clerk Kelly, and members of City Council. My name is Kelly Ganderzki, I'm the Corporation Counsel. I will review the rules of decorum that are codified in Section 2-65.1 in Division 2 of the Administration Section of the Municipal Code. The Presiding Officer shall conduct City Council meetings in an orderly manner. No person in the audience shall engage in disorderly conduct, including any act that disturbs, disrupts, or otherwise impedes the orderly conduct of any City Council meeting or the presentation of any speaker. During the public comment portion of the City Council meetings, if any, all public comments are limited to three minutes per individual. Individuals are directed to be brief and concise in making their remarks and to address topics directly relevant to business of City Council. The Presiding Officer, after one warning, may rule an individual addressing City Council out of order if the individual one becomes repetitive, two exceeds the three-minute limitation, three makes personal attacks against others, four makes rude or slanderous remarks, five becomes threatening or boisterous, six engages in electioneering for candidates, or seven otherwise interferes with the orderly and dignified conduct of the meeting. If ruled out of order and is found by the Chair to be out of order, the individual may be barred from further remarks at that City Council meeting and barred from further attendance at the meeting. This ruling of the Chair can be overridden by a two-thirds vote of aldermen present. Nothing herein is intended to limit or restrain negative, positive, or neutral comments about the manner in which individual employee, officer, official, or council member carries out his or her duties in public office or public employment of the city.
Okay, thank you. You know, the mayor touched upon the search warrant, and just to clarify, there was four departments involved in that. That was finance, I.T., and the business licensing. So, not just the clerk's office, but we all complied. So, I'm gonna mention the first five people who have signed up to speak. That will be Carlos Smith, Jose Medrano, Lori Sudek, Brother Blanks, and Calvin Mathis. Go ahead and line up on the east side of the room and be ready for your three minutes. Carlos Smith, Jose Medrano, Lori Sudek, Brother Blanks, and Calvin Mathis. Go ahead, Mr. Carlos.
All right. How y'all doing? Name's Carlos Smith. I live a couple feet from here, 2223 Washington Street, right here. I'm the owner of a crazy place, venue. Last week, I attended a planning and zoning meeting where a few issues were brought up. And I wasn't asked to come here, but I wanted to volunteer to come here to let you guys know that my business, we will do a better job in making sure that we provide a fun, family-oriented venue. A lot of the perception of the space is a little bit, maybe, it may be a little clubby for some, and some people, when you say "club," that means like violence. It has been one incident that happened, well, two incidents that has happened outside on the street that I'm taking full accountability for in front of the council here today voluntarily, and to let you know that we're gonna do a better job in making sure that we provide a safe space for citizens and people who travel to come enjoy our space. Also, extending invitation to any of you guys that want to come, take some pictures with your kids, children, whatever you want to do, any type of commercial ads you guys want to do, or anything like that, we do all those services. So, I'm just, I guess officially reaching my hand out to you guys and letting you guys know that the space is available to be used for you guys as well. It's not a nightclub. I know that some videos do go out and it makes it look like that's what we're doing. But we also host, you know, families, repast, weddings, all type of events. So, if you guys have any need of that service, please feel free to reach out. The second thing I wanted to talk about was a little different. I spoke about the parking issue, but I'll speak about it again. I have about $3,000 worth of tickets in my truck right now. Unfortunately, I live right there, and then I work right there. And the guys that do the tickets, they're just doing their job. They're just literally doing their job. And probably 10% of the time, I'm bogus, real talk. But the other 9%, it is a bit excessive. I've got a ticket for having the wheel on my truck, because, I mean, it's a custom truck. They gave me a ticket for having the wheel on the back of it. And I haven't paid any of those tickets, which I will one day, but it's a lot of money. So, if there's something, I know Chief mentioned to me, well, former chief, he had mentioned to me a few remedies, but if there's a way, again, for residents and business owners on Genesee, we know that parking is tough. But if there's a way that we could come up with some other things to remedy this, would be awesome. That was all I had to say. Thank you, guys, for the time. I appreciate it so much. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Jose Medrano.
Good evening, no, I'm sorry. Good evening and Happy New Year, Mayor and City Council. Mayor, the last time I was here, I asked you to consider removing yourself from all proceedings regarding Stretch's Bar and Grill license removal hearing. Obviously, you made a decision to hold the proceeding in your jurisdiction. With that being said, and according to Ms. Patty Flesher, a member of Waukegan Forward who helped organize referendum, Petition Drive said the City Council meeting, a managerial forum of government to eliminate elected aldermen, by words, will be reduce expenses, increase revenue, and reduce corruption. Mayor Taylor, how can you be impartial regarding Stretch's Bar and Grill license removal hearing process when the owners of Stretch's Bar and Grill supported you and have physically worked in your campaign to become Mayor of Waukegan? I also bring a question immediately, following your inaugural ceremony to be seated as Mayor of Waukegan, you reinstated the liquor license of your campaign supporter and worker. You ordered a new meter to be installed, which changed the address from 200 North Green Bay Road to 202 North Green Bay Road, and at the same location, you waived a $22,321 water bill, $22,321, for the same address, Stretch's Bar and Grill. Mayor Taylor, was Ms. Patty Flesher, who is a member of the Waukegan Forward and strong supporter of your, aware of all these decisions before she filed the referendum to eliminate elected aldermen by wards, because I can't believe your supporters would use the word corrupt, knowing that you made a decision that can be seen as political favor, AKA corrupt in nature? Mayor Taylor, for the sake of your integrity and your supporter, Ms. Patty Flesher, who is a member of the Waukegan Forward, please send Stretch's Bar and Grill license removal hearing process to the State of Illinois State Liquor License Commissioners Chairman, Ms. Cynthia Burge. Thank you for your consideration, and I do have pretty much approval of the transactions. And that'll be all, actually.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Lori Sudek?
Do you have copies or just one copy?
Thank you, Ms. Lori.
Good evening. I'm Lori Sudek. I'm President of College of Lake County, and I appreciate the opportunity to be here with you this evening. The college is in its final countdown to the grand opening of the Lakeshore Campus Student Center, and on behalf of the CLC community, I come this evening to invite the mayor, the entire City Council, our city officials, and our entire Waukegan community to join us for this historic moment. Over the past several years, the CLC team has diligently advanced efforts to create a vibrant urban campus environment, building mutual benefit between the college, its students, and the community. Examples of those efforts include the completion of Lakeshore Campus facilities improvements, bookstore, new student community engagement space, children's learning center upgrades, classroom modernization and technology upgrades. We've expanded the resources for students addressing their barriers to success, including their food insecurity, technology access, financial resources, with the implementation of a share market, emergency funds, and increasing access to free laptops, hotspots, and calculators. We've expanded course offerings and opened new programs. We've created a heating, ventilation, air conditioning lab, an automation mechatronics robotics lab, arts programming, delivery of the Workforce Equity Initiative grant, putting students in families sustaining living wages in careers that are viable through programs that are tuition-free. We've raised $4.7 million in donor resources specific to our Lakeshore Campus efforts, with $3.6 million of that for capital and $1.1 million to implement our early childhood program delivered in Spanish language. The cohort begins tomorrow. We've expanded and strengthened our partnerships with the nonprofit community and government agencies, our education partners, and businesses. We're excited to celebrate these achievements with our community as we launch our Student Center on Saturday, January 28th, from 11:00 to 3:00. This is a $48 million investment, which we will use to further the strategic priorities and help partner in our community of Waukegan and our North Shore communities to build equity and access and success to a high-quality education, teaching and learning excellence, and workforce development. Thank you for your time, and I hope to see you at the event. I will leave flyers at the door.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, what time did you say the event is?
11:00 to 3:00.
11:00 to 3:00.
Thank you very much. Brother Blanks?
Brother Blanks, Black Abolition Movement for the Mind. I would like to say, and hopefully that while Ms. the CLC Board President is here, the last board meeting that I was at for CLC, there was a group of black staff and administrators who raised their voice and concerns of institutional racism. So, as this new campus opened up, I hope that Mrs. Sudek really hear and listen to the voices of those staff members and people who raised their voice regarding the concerns of institutional racism. And if there's anything that we as Black Abolition Movement for the Mind can do to aid and assist in that process, let us know. Because when you open this new campus up, we really hoping that we can all work together for the best interest of the good and the whole of the education of our youth, and that cannot be done unless the staff and administrators feel they're being treated fairly. With that being said, the civilian-- the civilian Office of Police Accountability Mission is to provide a just and efficient means to fairly and timely conduct investigations with, within our jurisdiction, determine whether allegations of police misconduct are well-founded, identify and address patterns of police misconduct. This is taken from COPA. And me and my brother here, we had an opportunity to attend the civilian, I mean, the civil service meeting on last, this month. And they was very informative. We learned a lot. But what we did learn also, and with them being very open and honest about and transparent about what their jobs are, what they do, they did let us know they do not do this. And so with that being said, it is a need in this city because, Mayor, we don't know how long you'll be mayor, but the thing is, every administration goes around. We don't know what that next administration would be like. Uh, so we're asking and we're thinking ahead. There is a need in this city for a office, a civilian office of police accountability that is independent, that is independent. Because your, your civil service commission is, it's not, it can't be too independent when some of the people that are part of the civil service are police. So we are really looking forward to having, you all take this into consideration, a civilian Office of Police Accountability as opposed to a civil service commission. Independent of the city that hold the police accountable, because, Mayor, long after you gone, we need an independent voice to hold the police department accountable, because we've had too many incidents that show between the city, it just wasn't independent. We need that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Kelvin Mathis.
Good evening. Uh, first on the thing I wanted to talk about was being a part of BAM. Brother Blanks, the last time I was standing up here with Brother Blanks, he presented me with a gift, you know, to show me his appreciation for working with BAM. And I, I just want to let him know, I appreciated even more working with BAM, because as he just talked about, BAM is about solutions. We've offered a solution right there. And that's what I appreciate about BAM and just working with the youth and, and doing our part to make the community better. Uh, and also I want to, and that being said, speaking of the community, I want to thank all the elected officials that I saw at Ye Shing's event, at, where she brought to light the human trafficking issue. And it was nice to see all the elected officials, the Mayor Taylor, I saw you, and I, I saw Alderman Florin, and a few more. And that was a great thing, because it shows good involvement in the community. Another issue, I just want to comment on that you guys had great passion when you talked about the city manager. It was just something great for me to see democracy in action. And, and I can appreciate your, your passion. So that being said, you got to appreciate me and Brother Blanks and BAM's passion when we, when we fight for equal rights and justice as it relates to police accountability and justice. We have passion, just like you have passion with bricks and mortar and, and all those type things. We have passion with people's lives that get destroyed when you end somebody's child's life and you're not even accountable for it. Forgive me, Chief Zupack, if I don't shed any tears for you, you moving on, but I just think it was a bad decision to have a person in the department to hold those accountable in the same department he came up in. That's just not even wise. Anybody wouldn't, I don't know who would agree with that. And we need change in the police department. You guys are saying yay, yay, yay to sell them, six-figure sellers all over the place, dead parties all over the place. We have a bad department. And don't take it personal, none, and that's why I wanted to make sure everybody knows. When I speak to anybody, this, this is not personal. This is business. I'm sick of seeing people get killed by the very people who are supposed to be protecting them. You guys are supposed to be professionals. It's good that you go home safe, but everybody should go home safe. Just because you got a hammer and a gas can taped to your body don't mean you should get several shots, get killed. Just because you're a passenger, when your girlfriend makes mistake, don't mean that you should get killed. We got an officer being charged with murder, and you guys are not doing anything. So we offered this as a, as a solution.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next group will be Jose Guzman, Rayon Edwards, Clyde McLamore, and Margaret Carrasco. Jose Guzman, Rayon Edwards, Clyde McLamore, and Margaret Carrasco. Go ahead, Mr. Guzman.
I actually wrote some stuff down, because I had a lot of time to think about it. Hello, my name is Jose Guzman. I live in the second ward. The reason I'm here to address what's been going on in the city with the state investigators and a person being indicted by a grand jury, first of all, I'm asking for Alderman Kirkwood to do the right thing and resign after being indicted by a grand jury, obviously. Oh, sorry. Okay. Second, we need to get rid of all the special influence that is moving our city government. Four years ago, multiple aldermen took huge donations and influenced the game industry in our city. Instead of doing it the right way and let the people decide what they wanted to do. Thirdly, one of the biggest topics that I hear up and down the streets is the city manager. It was voted down by the city council. Now it is working its way onto the ballot. I don't understand why it shouldn't be let on the ballot. Let the people decide, and then we could work on from there. Remember, we are here for the people, by the people. So let them decide where we move forward from here. Okay? That's all I'd ask. I mean, it was voted down, that's it. Let it move forward. If not, let it be voted down. But let them decide. That's it.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Rayon Edwards.
Good evening, council. We here again. Corruption, just everything going on, and we ain't learnt nothing. I'm gonna talk about a document that I seen, that you guys having a meeting tomorrow about this election board and the people that, you know, supposed to overlook the signatures. And I'm gonna ask the mayor to remove herself from chairing that board, to make a statement that you will not chair that board. We're talking about the city manager. All of y'all got to do better with this professionalism theme. You know what I mean? It's sad. It's really sad. If you go back and you look at a lot of the council meetings, it look like a lot of our aldermen's are asleep. Nobody is prepared. Nobody is paying attention when people speak. It is just an utterly mess, literally. And so sometimes you have to ask yourself, who would be proud to be from Waukegan with all of this going on? I'm still waiting on this city to step up. Step up and do what you asked us to trust you to do. We didn't ask you to run. You asked to run. You put your head in this race for whatever reason you did it. Corruption has been going on in this city for far too long. And with this new position you guys are trying to do, city manager, I, I, I don't understand it. I don't think none of you aldermen's have done your job with educating your constituents about it, about anything for that matter. Do this city need one? We probably do. But how do we know that that city manager ain't gonna be just as corrupt as any mayor can be? Because once you put him there, they making the decisions. We didn't vote for no city manager. We not voting to put one into place. And so I say this going forward to everybody that run for office. If you can't do the job, don't get in the race. It's real simple, and that's what everything in the world. Any job you go apply for, when you go apply for it, it tells you the requirements and the job title. I advise you guys, because I tell my babies, reading is fundamental and it's necessary. And I don't mean to offend nobody on here, but I only see a couple of aldermen's that actually really, really ask questions and be in, in, in tune with what's going on. We got to do better. We do a lot of talking about the police and things of that nature. I'm gonna say this publicly, I mean this, I'm gonna put this on my platform, because I mean this. I am super excited that Navarro is taking the chief spot in term, and I hope he get the job. I've been knowing him since he's been on that force. And as somebody born and raised from here, somebody that's been in the streets, he showed us real love, respect, even when we was wrong. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Clyde McLamore.
Just one piece, Clyde?
Yeah. Good evening, aldermen and all the women. There's a sheet of four photos on it passed out to you. These photos are, as you can see, a city vehicle parked on a yellow zone. This vehicle parks there every day. I talked to the city parking enforcer, and I was told that they're not allowed to ticket any city vehicle parked illegally. I investigate more and found out this vehicle is a city vehicle that George Bridges drive at Chief of Staff. Last Tuesday, I parked a little bit over the line, and I got a $20 ticket put on my car. Again, I asked this administration, what are you doing? Mayor Taylor parks outside on the end where citizens should park to come to City Hall to handle their business. There's a designated spot for city officials. This City Hall is a citizens' building and not the Pentagon. So is it legal for city officials to break laws, but citizens and business owners get tickets? Mayor Taylor, Ms. Sealy told mister, until you do right by me, everything you think about is gonna crumble. Well, until you do right by the people of Waukegan, I'm gonna be a thorn in your side. I told you, I will work overtime and pay to check every signatures on that petition. And I did, as I said. Some lady got up here and said that y'all hid all the signatures. You had more citizens from Beach Park, North Chicago, Zion, McHenry County, Gurnee, Lake Zurich. I even found signatures as far as Kentucky. All the people, while I was in Springfield last week, I spoke with the House Speaker, House Speaker Welch, and also talked to him Saturday at the Afro-American Business Association, MLK brunch. Last year, I lobbied reparations for Illinois black citizens, which we was able to get a commission. After speaking with Speaker Welch and the state rep, Will Davis, the commission is gonna do more this session. Some new bills are coming, and I applied to be on that commission. Waukegan could be the second city in Illinois if you write this into your 2023 budget with this new money from the casino and marijuana dispensary. This will put Waukegan in the national news in a good light. Right now, Waukegan is not looking that good.
Thank you, Mr. McLamore. Margaret.
Okay, are we ready? Here we go. Okay, number one, the city recently published notifying all the candidates not to put political signs next to the streetlights. With all due respect, Alderman Seager, I have a picture right here of your sign right next to the street side on Doug Dale and Lewis. You didn't even ask the owner for permission. But last time around, so many eyewitnesses saw you removing, I don't know how many, many, many Ann Taylor signs, and you get away with it. It's not gonna happen, okay? We got cameras, we got video cameras, so smile at the camera, sir. Next, residents are asking and demanding answers, Mayor. We don't understand why. Why is it that the city clerk, Janet Kikeli, had in her possession, on her desk, key documents, three or five years old, many that are involving our alderman who's under federal investigation? Why does she have access to them? Why would she have kept them, is the magic question? Next, I want to invite all residents to come on down tomorrow, 5 o'clock. It's going down. Yes, it's the city manager. Hear the arguments, there's valid points on both sides, okay? You need to know, get informed. But what I don't understand is, lastly, why, and here's a copy of the challenge, why it's no one, why it's even gotten to this point? Because the objector is on here states, Dr. Sylvia Sims Bolton. So tonight, I'm presenting an ethics complaint, and I'm requesting legal counsel that all, that the sign for the alderman be corrected, that all business cards and all documents remove the title of doctor, because per Dr. Sylvia Sims Bolton's relatives stated to me, personally stated to me, that the doctor's degree is not legit, that it was actually obtained online by some apostle, Michael Hargit. I don't know if you know him, recall that name, okay? Who is not a recognized legit, we know who he is, okay? He's not a legitimate educational institution, okay? So I went to Lake County Health Department. Yeah. And they have all their employees here with all the degrees. And when they have a doctor's degree or medical or master's, whatever the case may be, they noted on it. Guess what? You're listed not with a doctor's degree. You're just listed as Sylvia Sims, Sims Bolton, I apologize for the transaction, and as a counselor.
Thank you, Margaret. Thank you.
Only.
Thank you, Margaret. Always informative and misinformative. Mayor, that concludes audience time.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I do, before we go on to the business, I do want to state that the objection tomorrow is at 5 o'clock. I have removed myself before this ever, before a date was set, I had removed myself. So the people that will be on the committee will be the city clerk, Alderman Moseo, and Alderman Newsome will be hearing the case, but I am not going to be part of the committee. The, going on to the consent agenda, can I have a motion for a first?
Motion.
I'm sorry, who was that?
Me.
Alderman Turner, sorry. Um, second? Okay. Um, that was Alderman Kirkwood. Okay. Item A, motion to, well, first off, any objections to the motions for the consent agenda? Nope? Okay. Item A, motion to approve vendor payments dated January 16th, 2023, in the amount of Item B, motion to approve miscellaneous payroll, paid holiday buyback and comp time elected officials and civil service stipend dated January 13th, 2023, in a total amount of Item C, a motion to approve regular payroll dated January 13th, 2023, in a total amount of $1,755,534.99. Item D, a motion to approve miscellaneous payroll I, I AFF retro dated December 30th, 2022, in a total amount of $180,045.77. Item E, an ordinance approving zoning calendar 2688, a text amendment to section 4.4-2-4 of City of Waukegan zoning ordinance, removing paragraph I, outdoor dining established from the permitted temporary uses list. This matter was heard on January 3rd, 2023, in the Community Development Committee meeting. Item F, an ordinance approving zoning calendar 2689, a conditional use permit for an educational institution in the O-I-1 district with the temporary use of two 28-by-70-foot modular classroom units at 621 Belvedere Road. This matter was heard at the January 3rd, 2023 Community Development Committee meeting. Uh, no questions being asked. Roll call, please.
Alderman Moseo.
Aye.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome. Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Florian.
Aye.
Alderman Hayes.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager. Motion passed, ma'am.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Item 5 and 6, there being no reports in communications or old business onto new business. Is there anybody who wants to do an omnibus to this?
Always.
Well, we will remove item H.
I'd like to remove what?
How about J?
You want J? Okay.
And L, please.
L, okay.
H, J, what else did we say?
H, J, and L.
A.
Okay.
Oh, you know what? I'm sorry. Establishing outdoor, establish, okay, yeah, L, that'll do it.
Okay.
You know, maybe we should take K out too, just for discussion and clarification for the public, and me.
Okay. So omnibus for items A through G and I. Okay, any questions to those motions?
Ma'am.
Okay, I need a motion, I need a, you got a first, and the second was Alderman Kirkwood?
Second.
We have a second. Item A, resolution approving and authorizing the proper city officials to retroactively approve spending authority per section 2-4-8I-2, bona fide emergency to Campanella and sums in the amount of $6,175.56. This matter was presented at the Public Works and Infrastructure Committee meeting on January 17th, 2023. Item B, a resolution approving a change order with EJUSA, Inc., for the purchase of additional hydrants for the amount not to exceed $30,000. This matter was presented at the Public Works and Infrastructure Committee on January 17th, 2023. Item C, a resolution approving and ratifying an application for an Illinois Department of Natural Resources Coastal Management Program grant. This matter was presented at the Finance and Purchasing Committee on January 17th, 2023. This is a grant application, it was for a hun, we are trying for 150,000, there is a city match of 50,000 on that. Item D, a resolution approving and ratifying the application for the National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration Coastal Habitat Restoration Resilience Grant. This matter was presented at the Finance and Purchasing Committee on January 17th, 2023. Item E, a resolution approving the retroactive grant application for public infrastructure and economic development funds from the Community Development Block Grant. This matter was presented at the Finance and Purchasing Committee on January 17th, 2023. There is a 25% leverage from the applicant. Item F, a resolution approving and ratifying an application for the Illinois Travel and Tourism Grant Funds from the Illinois Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity. This matter was presented at the Finance and Purchasing Committee on January 17th, 2023. It's a matching grant, we're trying for 20,000, and the city would coffin, or chip in 20,000. Item G, a resolution waiving competitive bidding and authorizing the purchase of upgrades to audiovisual equipment from AVI Systems, Inc. This matter was presented at the Finance and Purchasing Committee on January 17th, 2023, and it is not to exceed 140,000. Item I, a resolution authorizing the proper city officials to approve the land lease with Commonwealth Edison Company. This matter was previously presented to the Finance and Purchasing Committee on November 21st, 2022, and it is for $525 a year. Any questions?
I need to know who made the motion for the omnibus.
Um, Mozio and Kirkwood.
And then who made the motion for, for this? That's it?
For what?
The motion I heard was to exclude those items, but the rest would be omnibus, is that, that was the question?
Yeah, everything else was, those, the exclusion was for H, J, K, and L. Ready? Yep, roll call, please.
Alderman Mozio.
Aye.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Florian.
Aye.
Alderman Hayes.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager. Motion passed.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Item H, that involves a liquor license.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Alderman Turner, a second. Alderman Mozio, any questions to the motion?
Can I say a couple things?
Sure.
We're talking about H, correct? So this is in my ward. This gentleman came to my place of business to try to coerce me into discussing this, talking about it. I was not there when he came, but I found that very disturbing, first of all, that that's never happened in my three and a half years here as an alderman. And one of the things that he indicated was that he was told this license was grandfathered in by the previous owner. And so I feel he was misled by the person who he purchased this business from. And I think, I mean, I don't, I don't know that we have anything to do with him being misinformed, but I just think, I don't know, I just wanted to put that out there and let the other council members know that those two things had occurred. And so, anyway, I, I, I think we've talked about, you know, reducing these number, the number of these C1 licenses for gas station type locations, and anyway, I just wanted that information out there.
Can I ask a question? I, I remember this item in the January 3rd Community Development Meeting, but I thought we voted this down. It was voted down.
Committee voted it down.
Okay, all right. No, I just want to make sure everyone understands that the committee discussed this, and we voted this down.
Are there any questions for legal on this, or?
See, I'm just, I remember, C1 is any liquor, all kinds of liquor.
Yeah, hard liquor.
Hard liquor.
It's not just beer and wine.
I think F1 is beer and wine.
And I think we said we had eight of these that were out there at one time, correct?
Seven.
Seven out there, this, this is the seventh, if we don't, we're down to six, type of thing. Okay, I just want to make sure I get my.
And, and wasn't the original process to reduce the number that we have?
I don't know.
The ordinance was changed and amended to grandfather in seven. And I think the idea being, I think the intent was to reduce as time went on, businesses decided not to operate anymore.
It might have, it might have been by some, I don't remember if it was a consensus, I don't remember, a while back.
So would this business qualify for grandfathering?
My understanding is that this business is not qualified because it wasn't a transfer of assets. That's my understanding.
So it does not qualify for grandfathering?
To qualify for grandfather has to be a sale of the assets of the business, from one business to another, and that was not the case here, is my understanding.
So this, this does not qualify?
Correct.
It does not.
Just have a quick.
Alderman Florian, did you get a chance to talk to him at all, or did, no?
I did not. He, he spoke with my husband, because my husband happened to be there when he came, and I never reached out.
If I may, so the question is allowing them to sell the hard liquor, right? I mean, wouldn't be a big deal if they were selling beer and wine, right? Is that right?
Yeah.
All right. So, as always, you know, I'm in favor of business and freedom, and I don't see why there would be a distinction. People drive to a liquor store to buy hard liquor, and what's the difference if they're driving to this store? I think it should be granted, and I don't know why the guy would come to your office, though, but, but anyway, that's, that's my thought.
What I will say is, being on the council at the time that they did the seven, and I think Alderman Mozio will say this too, was one of the complaints was the amount of garbage that, liquor bottles that were around gas stations at that time, and still exist to this day.
Yeah.
And so that was, am I right, Alderman Mozio and Alderman Newsom?
That was one of the issues, thinking, you know, we always, you know, liquor sales always spirals, I don't want to say out of control, but it just spiraled.
It's a legal product, people are selling to adults, and, you know, if, if, for that matter, why don't we just pass an ordinance that you can't drive your car to the liquor store? You have to take public transportation or a cab or something. So I, I just don't see the rationale. What do you accomplish by not allowing someone to sell alcohol, simply because their customer drives to that place to buy it? I don't get it. Anyway, we don't have to go around and around, you guys know how I feel. So, go ahead, call the question, please.
I will say that I have picked up garbage numerous times along the road that goes from this gas station towards my neighborhood, and one of the things that I pick up the most are little tiny bottles of empty alcohol. So somebody is going in there, buying the little airplane, I don't know what you call those, and then driving down the street and whipping them out the window, because they're all within, you know, about 50 feet of each other, I swear, so it's, it's the same guy with the same brand, or girl, whatever. So I do, I do agree with the mayor that the littering of, you know, the stuff is, is part of the issue.
Alderman Mozio, didn't, wasn't there some discussion about those little bottles of alcohol some years ago? You recall? I assume you spent.
It might have been, I know, now you're really taking me back, but I know at one time, North Chicago tried to ban.
Right. Yeah.
Pint sales. I don't know if that held up, oh, council, would that hold up? Can you restrict the, the, the volume of booze?
I mean, that's a hard question to answer right now. It depends upon what kind of community it is, it depends upon homeowners, yeah.
Again, liquor is just, you can talk about, I don't know, in my opinion, overregulated, I've always stood, it's like, to me, it's like anything else, you sell it, if you sell it the wrong way, we yank it, you know, type of thing. But, you know, and I, I get Alderman Florian's point, you know, I don't remember us trying to get rid of these by attrition, maybe we did, I don't remember, my mind is, I'm getting old. But, you know, I get her point about all that, and, you know, litter is hard to nail down to one spot, but if you're selling airplane things, and then you walk out in the parking lot, or you walk out a block far, it's got all over, well.
They do the same with potato chip bags and McDonald's.
Correct, correct.
Litter, litter is litter, right?
Correct, litter is very hard to nail down, but, you know, and I've always had the same, same attitude usually is that, hey, you want to sell something, you sell it, sell it the wrong way, we take it away, but I can understand Alderman Florian's point on this.
Can I just make a comment before we vote, ma'am? I think being in favor of business is one thing, I think we should be in favor of upholding the ordinances that we have in place, if we're gonna be taken seriously, and we're gonna have any credibility as, as a, as a body up here, we need to enforce the ordinances. If we don't like the ordinances, then you can move to change them, but at the moment that the ordinance stands, that these licenses are not gonna be handed out to certain purchasers of the existing seven or eight gas stations that were in place. There was a city council at the time, apparent, I'm, I'm sure deliberations took place, and a vote was taken, and people voted to have the ordinance put in place. The ordinance is in place now, and our job up here is to enforce it. So I understand what they're asking for, and trying to get this license transferred, but it goes against the ordinance, and like I said earlier, it goes against the spirit of what the, what the council was trying to do at the time. So if you don't like it, then the proper vehicle for changing it is to, you know, make a motion to, to amend the law, consult with council, and, and figure out how to do that. It's not to start picking and choosing who's gonna get a pass and who's not, who's gonna get a permit and who's not, who's gonna get a license and who's not, because that is a slippery slope that none of us want to jump on, because there's no telling where it goes. So I think that this has to get voted down for that reason. There's a very clear law in place that prohibits it.
Real, real quick, though, Alderman Hayes, I appreciate your comments. Counselor, if, is that transfer of assets our ordinance, or is that a state law?
That was in the city's ordinance that I read.
Okay, so if, albeit, if, if the sale would have been different, this wouldn't have been in front of us, correct?
I don't know. I, I don't know how the, you know, the committee ruled, the committee turned it down, and I, you know, there might have been other reasons for that. This council can vote it up or can vote it down.
Alderman Newsom had a question, or had a statement.
I was just gonna say that this ordinance is asking us to create a new one. We are supposed to be eliminating and not creating new ordinances for the C1. Once they lose their license or shut down, or whatever they're gonna do, we're supposed to leave it at that number.
Why?
That's what we voted on. We're not creating more liquor licenses. As the intent to go.
That was a whole nother council, that, I mean, so using that logic, anything that was passed previously, we could never change, right? Because that was somebody else's intent, so we're, we're the council now.
But this ordinance is still in place.
And most of our ordinances were made by a previous council. We, we didn't create them all. How many are there, 400 and something?
Guys, this is an easy one. We don't go rogue, all right? If you want to change the law, you can bring a motion to change the law. We're just up here to enforce it. Sorry to jump back in, but like, this isn't the Wild West. Like I said, let's, let's try to maintain some civility and some credibility up here, and do what we're, we're called on to do, which is enforce the laws put in place by prior city councils.
Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and call the vote. Madam Clerk?
All right. Alderman Mozio.
Aye.
Alderman Kirkwood. Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
No.
Alderman Florian.
No.
Alderman Hayes.
No.
Alderman Bolton.
Uh, no.
Alderman Seager. Pardon me? Motion fails.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Okay, item J, as Alderman Kirkwood comes back, we will go ahead and discuss item J. Who had the question or comment on that one?
I'd just like to know, and, and more, more for the benefit of the audience, what this ordinance changes. It relates to mobile vendors, what's the, what are the parameters around this ordinance?
Can I get a motion, a first and a second?
So moved.
Second. Mayor, you told me that it was, we, we have it, in committee, it was correct.
Correct.
On the committee, on the committee.
Correct now, now.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
I, I will do a motion, and then I'm gonna let Alderman Turner talk. Can I have a first?
You did, me, and a second.
Okay, Alderman Florian and Alderman Hayes. Alderman Turner, you have the floor.
Yeah, again, I just would like to, for the record, and, and for transparency and clarification for, for myself and for the audience, what is it that we are approving? What is in, is this, this lineup just says, "An amendment to sections relating to mobile vendors." What does that mean? What, what are we changing?
You want to answer that, or?
If I understand it right, we've made it less restrictive.
Well, what's in the ordinance?
It's, you have all the paperwork on it.
Is it correct in board docs?
Yes.
Okay, good, all right.
So we don't know?
No, you have it. You have a copy of it.
All right, I'll read it. Let me dig it up.
It's basically changing it so that they have seven days a week at the beach, the casino, and parts of Clayton Street, correct?
Correct.
All right, well, there you go. Thank you.
Less restrictive. While we're making progress, we're not the city.
Ooh, something we agree on.
Well, you know.
Any other questions?
City, city knows coming around. City knows coming around. You know, not, try not to be caring all the time.
Any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Mozio.
Aye, get out of here.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Florian.
Aye.
Alderman Hayes.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager. Motion passed.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Item K, can I have a first? I need a motion, okay, who was, okay, Alderman Kirkwood, a second.
A second.
Alderman Rivera. So this is an ordinance approving the amendment to Waukegan Municipal Code 14, Article 7, establishing outdoor dining establishments and repealing 6-0-1116. And what this is about is our outdoor dining was a little antique because it used to be that you had a certain liquor license to have outdoor dining. Then COVID came along and everybody had outdoor dining. So now our ordinances don't match up, that you're paying for a liquor license for outdoor dining and some people are getting outdoor dining free of charge. So what we've done is establish what constitutes outdoor dining. Those places that have it will now be inspected so that we can make sure that the property or the, you know, the outdoor dining facility is, meets code and is safe. And then it opens it up to everyone, not just those that were paying for a special license before. Any questions to the motion? And I hope that explains it to the public. Yeah. Why it's amended is it used to be a temporary. Now you can permanently have outdoor dining. And I think now that COVID is over, everybody still expects outdoor dining.
One, one thing, Mayor, in here it says, it's from April 15th to November 15th. Why put a date on it? Just weather permitted? It could be December 10th and it could be 70.
Yeah, and we will allow that. The problem that we have is that we, there will be times that we don't want, like, tables and chairs permanently set up outside so that the plows and, you know, can get through. So if you're on a sidewalk and you're blocking, but if there's a day that is a particularly nice day, you can put them out temporarily. But the big reason that we put that in is so that it will stop people from leaving them out year round and blocking us from doing snow removal.
Let's just use some judgment and some discernment, please.
Yep. So I'm looking at this schedule. First is business A is, this is, and it says, "A new restaurant that does not have a liquor license, liquor service, less than 3,000 square feet, is opening with outdoor dining." And so we're going to charge them $150. $150 plus a DRB.
That's the next item, actually.
Oh, okay.
So.
This is just the parameters without the fee, correct?
Correct.
Without the fee. It's just saying that they can or can't, right?
Yeah.
Okay, got it. All right, thank you and excuse me.
Okay, roll call, please, Madam Clerk. Alderman Mosio.
Aye.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Florian.
Aye.
Alderman Hayes.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Motion pass. Thank you, Madam Clerk. The next, first off, can I have a first and a second on this motion?
All first.
All second.
Okay. First was Alderman Rivera, second Alderman Florian, was it?
Yeah, or Bolton, whatever.
So I will explain this one a little bit. I'll read it first. It's an ordinance amending Chapter 14, Article 16, Section 14-11-01A, Fee and Special Event Permit Schedule, Establishing a Fee for Permitting and Maintenance of an Outdoor Dining Establishment in the City of Waukegan. So why we have a fee schedule, and we discussed this in committee, is that when you, we have had all these people form these outdoor dining places now, and we don't really even know where some of them are. We just happen to kind of find out about them. They may not be to code, they may not be set up correctly, they may not, if they're using like parking spaces, that may not be, it may not leave enough parking to honor what their code would be in getting that agreement to have a building with so many parking spaces. So this will do an inspection. It's also for public safety, to make sure that what is being put out is okay to be, to sit on and it passes code that they're not putting up portigos, for instance, that shouldn't be put up, or tents, or anything like that. So that's what the purpose of the fee schedule is. It is exactly what other communities do. Those fees were looked at by staff in other communities as well. So everything that, when you do an inspection and when you're doing all this, things cost money. And unfortunately, there has to be fees that go with things. And that's what the fees are for, is to, there will be some places that will probably not require down the road having an inspection, and there will be some others that might have, need inspections more often. So that's what the purpose of the fee schedule is. Any questions to that?
Yes, ma'am. So you're going to charge them $150 to come out and do an inspection? And let's say for an example, that the business is supposed to have eight parking spaces, but they decide that they're going to take up two. They paid $150 for the inspection, they come out and inspect and say, there you go, check the box, and then they take up the two spaces anyway. So who's going to know? I mean, you're not having people run around and do it. If you were doing that, then you could not charge them and just say, don't take up the, maintain the spaces that you are supposed to have. So that's one. Two, if you think about this, they pay in, let's say you're paying a building or a property tax, right? Then you pay a business permit fee, business license fee, then you got a liquor license, maybe a liquor license fee, you got a sign fee, you got to have a special, you know, charge to put a sign up on your building and advertise your building. So you would think all of those fees would allow for the amount of time it would take for some one of our employees to walk over there and say yes or no, right? So how many, I mean, how in-depth is that inspection, I guess is what I'm getting, right? It's just a cursory glance, are you set up right? Yes or no, right? So again, we've, you're paying a hundred, even right here in this fee schedule, the schedule is business license, $25. Occupancy inspection, $100. General business license, $150. DRB application fee, $25. Outdoor services permit, another $150. We are nickel-dime on fees and taxes, over and over, just too much regulation. We are just slamming these businesses.
I'll have corporate counsel address that and then, go ahead.
Good evening, Kelly Ganderzki, Corporation Counsel for the city. Alderman, when the staff and I met, we met numerous times, discussed the process of how this would work. Staff reiterated again and again, the, this isn't just the inspection, it's the initial application that has to be processed by staff. It's review of those plans, what they're asking for, plans and the application to be submitted to show how the outdoor setup would look and make sure that it's in compliance with setbacks and codes that if the tables aren't too close to the street, that we're keeping compliant with the ADA and ensuring that those with disabilities have enough adequate space to get by on the sidewalks. Additionally, it was to ensure the actual physical inspection, but also to ensure other dynamics such as processing of insurance. The city has to be listed as an additional insured. All that paperwork has to be processed and staff really impressed upon the group that met that this is, this is not just going to be a simple task to approve.
So what, when we pay property taxes and all these other taxes, right? What does that pay for? Because now we're charging an extra $150 for just one little inspection. So what's covered with, with the other $300? I mean, we're paying property taxes.
Your regular property taxes cover your police, fire, all of that. Urban. Which we haven't raised tax levy at all.
It covers all city employees, right? We don't just pay property taxes for police and fire.
No, no.
It's for a city employee.
Their pension.
So we're paying, we're paying for city employees to do a job. One of those jobs is inspecting these properties and managing, processing these applications. That's one part of that, right? But then on top of the property taxes this, this business owners paying, they're also paying business licensing fees, sign licensing, money, 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 right? So at some point, you got to say, more than enough is too much. And now, you know, let's give these businesses a break.
Well, I understand what you're saying, but anytime you provide a service, there's a cost to it. Nothing is free in life. I mean, it can't be free taxes, free, no fees, no nothing. There's fees that come with things.
I guess what I'm saying is they've already paid for it.
They haven't though.
All these other fees that are already in place, and now you're adding another fee just because.
Maybe is Mr. Sallis here? I think because it's his group that does all of the work and added on to everything else, he can break it down on how much extra city services this takes.
Can I say something while he's coming up? I know when I built the deck on my, well, I didn't build it. When I had a deck built on my house, I had to pay a fee for them to come out. And the inspector first came out to look in the holes and say, oh, those look good. Then he came back when it was all, oh, yep, you did a good job, and he was out of there. So we, we, we make our citizens pay fees for inspecting, you know, decks and driveways. And I had a resident call me, I think he was putting in a fence, and his fee was over $500. So if we're going to charge our residents for the improvements and the things they're doing to make sure they're safe and, and up to code and up to standard and will last, I don't see why we shouldn't have our businesses pay their fair share as well. And I believe our, our taxes are levied for police and fire pension, the library, and garbage collection. Is that, isn't it those four things? Am I missing anything, Mr. Schultz?
So, but then who pays George's fee?
I can't hear him. What did he say? That's the bulk of it. So, so we only levy tax property taxes for those four things. We didn't talk about roads, we didn't talk about equipment for public works, we didn't talk about salaries for employees. I mean, we have so many more expenses than just those four things that we levy property taxes for. None of this stuff is covered by your property taxes.
But we do levy property taxes to pay employees' salaries.
No, we don't.
Where does that money come from?
Well, it comes from these kind of fees and from.
You don't make enough money in fees to pay for 450 employees, their salaries.
But it comes from, from food and beverage taxes, it comes from hotel taxes, it comes from all of those revenues.
So you got all of those taxes and now you're going to add another tax.
Hold on, let's, let's let Mr. Sallis, Alderman Turner, let's let Mr. Sallis explain.
I'm, I'm sorry, Mayor, excuse me. I don't need to hear from George because I'm telling you, I'm not voting, I did not vote for more taxes.
That's fine, but the others would like to hear from him.
And, yeah.
However, I like to hear it. Thank you.
Go ahead, George.
So good evening, council members. When we came up with fee schedule for this, it was partly because we will be holding a development review board to go over these cases, to talk about the zoning issues that might come up, to talk about any building issues, safety issues. Well, to have that is all of the department heads from all of our departments, Public Works, myself, Planning and Zoning, CDBG, Engineering, am I missing some? Police, Fire. So all these people, all the department heads get together, that would be, that takes time out of our day. So in order to make it fair and to have everything done, that we need to have some kind of a fee to pay for that time out of our day. I'm sorry?
Your Honor, your Honor, real quick.
So, now, because the, because this stuff is going to be on the city property, we need to make sure that everything is done correctly.
So why not just do a special use permit if they're going to use city property, right? But if you're on your own property?
Don't go down that road, please, Jesus.
You know?
Well, don't go down that road.
Yeah, well, I gotta, I gotta.
I E Farmers Market, continue, John.
I gotta, you know, and.
Most of the properties that this would impact would be in city properties. There are very few locations that would have their own parking lots or their own parking areas that they could use.
Thank you.
Man.
Your Honor?
Yes.
May I speak?
Yes.
Let's say there's 20 of these businesses, that's 20 times 150, what's that, $3,000?
Yeah.
Oh, there's more than 20.
You think so?
Oh, yeah.
And it, and I get it. If you want to build a deck or you want to do this and that, most of these people are putting out tables and chairs. It ain't that hard of an inspection in my mind. I hate when we nickel-and dime people. I can't stand when we.
Well, the problem is until something happens where like they, like it was built on a deck that wasn't appropriate, and then suddenly the city's getting sued.
A lot of this is, and I get it, you can't have it all the way out on the sidewalk. People got to get by. If you want to use a city parking spot, you're going to have to pay for it. I get all that. I, but I just hate this nickel-and-dime fee, 150 for 20, three grand. That ain't going to pay for the employees working, going out and doing that. Three grand. Maybe it's five grand. I just, I, I don't like the fee. I'm not going to go, I'm not going to argue and get into it, but I don't like the fee. Good enough.
I agree. Maybe we should hold it over and have official discussion.
Why don't we hold this one over then at Alderman Turner's request and you guys can do more?
Is anyone going to change their mind if we hold it over? You're still going to vote no, Keith, no matter how long you hold it over.
Well, you're not going to change my mind, but I'm going to change yours.
Let's just vote on it.
Okay. Can we do a vote on it?
Yes.
Okay. Madam Clerk. Alderman Mosio.
No.
Alderman Kirkwood.
No.
Alderman Newsome.
Nay.
Alderman Turner.
No.
Alderman Rivera.
Yes.
Alderman Florian.
Yes.
Alderman Hayes.
Yes.
Alderman Bolton.
No.
Alderman Seager.
Definitely no.
Good job. Thank you.
Motion fails. Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. There being no ordinances, Alderman time. Alderman Mosio.
Yeah, real quick, I'll try to make this fast. I don't usually try to talk about this in Alderman's time because I don't see the people that need to hear it, hear it. But we've had all this social justice reform, which is needed. We've had all this, this crime bill that, that needs to be reformed. God knows, we need to do a better job in, in a lot of those areas. But one area that I think gets overlooked, and there is only two, well, there's three, crime labs in the state of Illinois. Chief, stop me if I screw this up. There's the Northern Illinois Crime Lab, which we use. There's the State Police Crime Lab, and Chicago has its own. So the problem with that is that there, think of that, there's a lot of things going on, there's a lot of, I shouldn't say crimes, but there's a lot of things that need to be vetted out, that need to be looked at. And just take this as an example, and I hope I articulate this, especially with gun crimes. We know that gun crimes are out of control. Let's say somebody gets in, in trouble for a gun crime and they have a situation where they get it and they get locked up and at the time, there's no bail. And they're, but let's say they're innocent, but they end up in jail for a gun crime they didn't commit, and God forbid, something happens and they're in jail. They get murdered, they get thugged out, they get whooped, whatever, and they're innocent. Because we're waiting for the crime lab to get us the evidence, either us or the state's attorney, nor the state's attorney, waiting for that.[1644.15] That ain't right. Because you're wait, that ain't the police department's fault, that's not the state's attorney's fault, that's a system problem because we've got a backlog because we don't have enough people to do the work. The other flip side of that, let's say someone does commit a crime with a gun and gets out for whatever reason, and we're still waiting on that evidence to be processed in the crime lab, and they're either in the wind, gone, or it ain't hard for them to get another gun and commit another crime. So in my mind, we need to continue to make strides in those other areas, but I don't know who you talk to about that. You have to talk to maybe the state legislature or maybe the state. We need more crime labs to process some of these crimes. Obviously, high-profile crimes, and crimes are not created all equal, the high-profile ones go to the front of the line. I think we all understand that. But still, they're overloaded. There's no way that they can get to the volume that they have in efficient time manner. The last thing we want is innocent people sitting in jail on a backlog, and someone who did commit a crime out on the street committing more crimes because we've got a backlog.
Good point.
That's something that we need to think about. I need to push that up to the state of Illinois or wherever it needs to go. I don't, the Northern Illinois Crime Lab, that's a separate entity, correct, Chief? It's its own gig. We pay. It's a private company. Obviously, Chicago has its own, run by the City of Chicago, and the state police run their own. So you've got one private institution that does it and two state institutions that do it. That's not enough. That is not enough, especially with the rise of, I'm not a criminologist or a CSI, but I'm sure a lot of that stuff takes a long time, correct, Chief? I mean, gun crimes, bullets, DNA of the bullets, the firing pin, all that nine yards. That takes a while. So I think that's something that we need to think about, and I don't know who you need to talk to. Clyde, you seem to got people's ears downstate. Can you, me and you get together and help people out on that? Huh? Well, maybe me and you can partner up and, you know, get something done. I only got six meetings, Clyde. All right? Come on now. All right, you know, I'm trying to, you know, I'm serious about this. We need, that needs to be fixed. Thank you.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. My condolences goes out to those who have lost loved ones. Also, on Sunday, there was a outstanding MLK program at First Corinthian Missionary Baptist Church that was put on by the North Shore Minister Alliance, very excellent speaker. Also, with the weather, it certainly is going to be changing. I would ask that homeowners make sure that we abide by the parking ordinance, making sure that we park on the even side of the street on even days, odd side of the street on those odd days, so that the plows can get through. And those streets that only park on one side, you know, give the plows at least an hour and a half, and then move your car to the other side so that they can plow the whole street. And those are those streets that are either dead into an alley, or they're just dead in, like Cornelia and Hamilton Court and some of the other ones in the Fourth Ward. Also, there will be a joint ward meeting between the Second Ward and the Fourth Ward on January 31st, starting at 5:30 to 7:00 at the Wild West Grill, located at 1412 Washington Street. We invite all Second Ward and Fourth Ward residents to come out at that time. Also, those of you that have driven down Washington Street, starting at Green Bay all the way to Park, you know how rough it is to get down that street unless you have to move to the side. Hopefully, you know, we will be doing something about that. And I know that, you know, the last time we checked, it was $25 million to do that particular road. And certainly, the curbs, sidewalks, lighting needs to be done, but certainly, we need to put that as a priority because it runs through three different wards. Also, once again, with the opening of the Lakeshore campus, I would invite everyone to come down to see the facility. Me and the Aldermen have had a tour of that, and hopefully, we can work out some agreements to get some of the other things that are still on the back burner. So, once again, thank everybody for coming out tonight. Let's continue to make Waukegan strong.
Alderman Newsome. Alderman Turner.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Couple of things. And I apologize, Alderman Kirkwood, this actually is in your ward, but I want to talk to, speak to 200 Julian Street the other day. Two days ago, we had a gentleman jump out of a window at Julian Street, apparently, and from what I was told by residents over there, is that there was some kind of altercation, fight. They were jumping and beating on this guy, and he jumped out the window to get away from it. And I was thinking, you know, this, we spend a lot of time talking about 200 Julian, a lot of stuff goes on on air, but I remember several, many years ago now, we actually had a police detail over there, Chief. You remember that? And maybe, maybe that's the solution. We need to set up a special police detail, have it paid for by the property owners. Because during that time when the police were actually sitting there and monitoring access to the building, there was much, much, there was a steep decrease in criminal activities over there, right? So something has to give. I know that we've got them in court and receivership, and something's going to happen eventually, a new ownership. But right now, there's a problem that we need to fix, and I think that's something we need to consider, is reestablishing a Waukegan police detail, not private security. They have security there now. So let's get the cops in there and let them do what they do, and charge the property owner for that detail. You know, we've been very fortunate. I think we had four days of extremely, like brutal cold out there, right? Like negative four, negative 13 one day. But other than that, and we had some high winds, but other than that, we had a pretty mild winter. And I think someone mentioned it last meeting, but Public Works is still on the job, right? So we can, they're still going out, you know, patching potholes, trimming trees, cutting trees, and doing other things so that normally might not get done during the winter, is my point, right? So pick up the phone. If you've got something that needs doing, give me a call, 847-445-3788. If it can't get done in the near future, we get it on the list, right? So I want to be made aware of the things that need to be done. And one of the things that we need to be done, and I want to encourage the ward residents in the Sixth Ward, is again, if there's a specific issue that you are aware of, you've observing traffic violations, someone called me recently about people running a stop sign at Julian and North, and we can request targeted enforcement from the police department. They're not going to sit out there for three or five weeks. There's not going to be a permanent post, but we can do targeted enforcement. I've had it done up on Washington, up on Jackson Street, north of my house, far, like in 1600, 1700 block, we've had it done out on Golf. They've been out on Lewis and Speeding and over on Sheridan Road. So my point being that even though it's winter time, it's extremely mild, and we can still get things done, but we can't get it done if we don't know it needs to be done. Can't help if I don't know about it. Call me, all right? Thank you all very much, and I'll see you in the neighborhood.
Alderman Rivera.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. First of all, I want to offer my condolences to all the Waukegan families who have lost a loved one. I would also want to thank CLC for your commitment to Lake County and to Waukegan. Thank you very much. A reminder, Earth Week, I know I'm talking real early about this, but this is happening in April. As we did last year, we want to create a whole week of getting as many people involved with cleaning Waukegan, getting ready for the summer. This is a cleanup that starts, it started with Marty Wasniak cleaning up the stuts. And I think we rolled it into getting the Aldermen involved, and the different wards had cleanups different days leading up to, I believe it's April 21st, being Earth Day. But again, the participation is with the Park District, the City of Waukegan, obviously, the School District, 60 individual citizens, and the Waukegan Township make all of this happen, which is a great collaborative initiative. And other than that, I want to thank everyone for coming. It was a great meeting. There was a lot of people here. Thank you for the ones that have stuck around to the end. I know it's hard. But last thing I want to do is let everyone know to please watch your speed as you're going home. Remember, speeding, we have to set the example. And God bless everyone. Thank you.
Alderman Florian.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I had two questions, Mayor, about the newsletter. Is that, I didn't hear you mention that. Is that going out soon?
It's still slated for the end of the month.
Okay. And then what about the town hall? Is that scheduled?
We have a tentative date, but we have not confirmed the location yet, so I don't want to put anything out until we have that.
Okay. Thank you for that. I wanted to clarify, someone mentioned earlier that the referendum, that signatures were collected to get a city manager, eliminated Aldermen. It does not eliminate Aldermen. It does change the structure of government if we up here don't vote to bring it back to what it is now. So let me explain a little. So the default, if you have a city manager, is you have six trustees elected citywide. I believe Zion has that, Gurnee has that. But we, as a body, can vote to restore one Alderman per ward and, you know, nine Aldermen again. Am I correct, Kelly, when I say that? There would have to be another referendum passed. Oh, there would? This is part of the three, yeah.
You would have to make sure that, or you'd get six.
Okay, okay. So we would vote to put it on the ballot, and the citizens would have to vote that in? Okay.
No, actually, the Alderman could bring that back.
Okay, I thought that's what I was told.
You could go ahead and bring that back. It just, the Alderman could have voted on that last time, too, but they voted no on all of them.
Right.
So it could come back, and that's up to the Alderman. That is not something that...
Okay, that's what I was, I thought. So it doesn't, it's tricky because it doesn't eliminate Aldermen. It just creates a different structure until we recreate what we have now. So I just wanted people to be clear about that. I want to speak just a little bit more about the hearing or whatever that it's being called for tomorrow. I know the mayor said she's recusing herself from leading it because she ran on bringing a city manager to the city, and I think it's appropriate she not do that. But I also find it difficult to comprehend how we can have our city clerk and two Aldermen when we were the ones that voted on this to begin with. And I really think this needs to be moved out of this chamber and across the street with people who didn't have a vested interest in the process or a say in the process. So that's just my two cents, if you will. I want to reiterate what Alderman Rivera said about CLC's commitment to our community. I see you guys are here every meeting. That's awesome. I can't wait to see the building completely finished. The last time I saw it, it was really close, and it's, it looks amazing. So I'm really looking forward to seeing it on the 28th. And lastly, I wanted to talk a little bit about Earth Week. I know Alderman Rivera's said a lot about it, but we are having a meeting this Saturday at 1 o'clock at Greentown for anyone who's interested in participating in Earth Week with us and helping us try to make this a much more invested event for the whole city. So if you'd like to join us at 1 PM on Saturday at Greentown. Thank you.
Real quick, we may want to clarify something, Alderman Florian. The reason me and Alderman Newsome are there is we have to be there by state statute.
I understand that.
Trust me, I'm sure, I can't speak for Alderman Newsome, but I don't want to sit, because ultimately, what's going to happen, in my opinion, whoever loses tomorrow, for lack of a better term, is going to take it across the street anyway. We have to do it because the state says we have to do it. I agree with your point, but I can't say I'm not coming. I have to do it.
Alderman Hayes.
Can I ask a question first? Is there a, is there a method for recusing, for the Aldermen to recuse themselves from a hearing?
I'm not going to recuse, but it's a two senior Alderman.
Do you know?
The statute's very specific about who has to serve, and it goes to the next senior Alderman. If the next senior Alderman can't do it, then we have to petition the circuit court for a person to be placed on the hearing board.
And I don't want to...
But there's only very specific circumstances that the statutory appointees not serve.
Okay, thanks for that. Sorry to put you on the spot. If it seems like it's going to wind up across the street anyway, then I don't want to make a big deal out of it. I do think optics are important, and I think it was very deeply divided vote and everything leading up to the vote about the city manager. So I think it would, you know, impartiality being of paramount importance, it's difficult optically to have Aldermen that may have voted for or against, you know, putting the city manager on the referendum, to then have those Aldermen be the judge and jury for the challenge, no matter how thin that challenge may be, to the petition. So I get it. I was just trumpeting the fact that we have to follow the laws that we make 15 minutes ago, so I can't sit here now and tell you to disregard them. However, I will just say that it optically, it doesn't look great. So a few other points that I want to make, I guess to put a bow on that. If there is a method for recusing or finding alternative judicial hearing officers for the challenge to the petition tomorrow, I would encourage us to find a way to make that happen. Okay, so a few other things. One, thanks for bringing up Earth Day. You guys did a great job last year. I know you spearheaded it, Alderman Florian and Alderman Rivera. I think Earth Day is a great kind of platform to start the messaging around how important it is that everyone within the City of Waukegan, the Aldermen included, myself, I need to do a better job of educating myself about some of the environmental issues that we're facing. But I would invite more informed members of the community. There's a lot of people that do a terrific job of studying the environmental challenges that we're facing in the city. And it could be the ETO issues and mitigating the risks surrounding the ETO emissions. It could be the coal ash ponds down along the lakefront. It could just be pollution from the cars, anything. But I would invite anybody who wants to talk about this to come to City Council. It can be during your three minutes during the general council meeting, but also during the committee meeting. I don't know the rules on whether a dialogue can take place, but I can assure you, the more it's being talked about at the meetings, the more attention it's going to get from the Aldermen. And I really, really think that one of the biggest challenges we face, crime, is probably the most important, but are the environmental issues that we face in the city. So I want to put that out there. I want to invite people to come to City Council to talk about it, and I want the Aldermen to start talking about it. I'm certainly going to do a better job, and let's see if we can create some awareness and try to make some progress on that issue. I think that's something we can all unite, rally around, and try to make some change. The, two other things, speeding. You guys preempted a lot of this stuff. Speeding along 120, I think the speed limit through a portion of 120 is 55 miles an hour. It is a racetrack, especially coming off Milwaukee there, heading east. There's some, there's an entrance ramp onto 120, and it's like, it's just an invitation for people to hit the gas. I experience it when I turn off of River Road, and I, it has been communicated to me by numerous people, not only people that live on River Road, that it is really, really challenging, A, to make a left-hand turn if you want to go west, but even to make a right-hand turn, those cars are coming up on you so fast, it's only two lanes, and it's really, really dangerous. You guys probably recall that there was a horrific fatality there last year, and there's also numerous, numerous accidents that take place. So I don't know if we can get more enforcement out there along 120. I don't know if we can have a study of the traffic patterns, the traffic speeds, the numbers of cars during certain points of the day, so that we can target enforcement. I'm not sure what can be done, but I would like to start to see some progress on at least reducing the speed, getting people to comply with the speed limit, or perhaps even reducing the speed along 120. Because 55 is, in a lot of people's minds, 65. And if they're going 65, then what's 72? And it's, it really, it's a recipe for disaster. Lastly, a point I'd like to make, as infrastructure is a big topic, I know, and a lot of the roads, there's evaluations and engineering assessments being done about the redevelopment of certain roads or replacement of roads. And I would encourage the city to, as they talk about potentially widening certain roads, also to consider bike lanes for people throughout the city. Maybe there, we could target some thoroughfares of the city and create some sort of safe, separate, dedicated bike lane on opposite sides of the roads to promote cycling. I know it's been discussed on potentially, you know, on the Amstutz, creating some sort of environment for reducing traffic and increasing either pedestrians or cyclists. But I think that's, that's a way for Waukegan to demonstrate its progressive chops and encourage people to get out and get around the city by other means. So I want to, again, just throw it out there and see if there's anything that can be done on that front. I know it's costly, but I think, I think it would do wonders for the city. Thank you.
Alderman Bolton.
Yes, I want to acknowledge our youth for their achievement and the awards they received tonight. I think that was excellent. I really applaud them for their achievement. And then I wanted to say thank you, Chief Zerpak, for your public service. I hate to see that you're going. I hate to see that you're going, I feel you just got here, I'm just getting acquainted, but thank you for your service and sacrifice. And then, I like to, it was great Martin Luther King celebration on Friday, Saturday, Sunday, my schedule was full. So, excellent job, well done, all throughout the city, and I just wanna thank my constituents for constantly reaching out to me, all three phones are blowing up all the time, so, don't forget that you can only, you don't only have to reach me at the 847 number, but you also can still reach me at that 224 number, so I'm kinda working both phones, plus my personal phone. And then, last, in reference to the comment of the individual that tried to, care to assassinate me anytime, that you wanna question my credentials, I have no problems in showing proof of that, as, well, of any degrees that I have, thank you so much for allowing me to serve you, it's all about you, thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Seager.
Chief Zubek, congratulations, enjoy life and have a good time, and God bless you, and thank you for your service, just be safe. Good night, everybody.
Motion to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?